Yeah. My phone's off, so we'll call this meeting to order. This is a work session of the Board of Trustees, November 18th, 2015. And if you want to speak, make sure you fill out one of these cards. And if you could, print, please, and also put the item that you wish to speak, like 201, or whichever item you'd like to speak for or against. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll have a roll call. Howard will be late, and of course Barbara McClurey is under the weather a little bit, so she won't be here. She's going to recall.
Trustee Frankel.
President.
Trustee Roggerio.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
I'm here.
President Mayor.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay. Let's stand for the pledge. Irene, since you've got such a beautiful voice, why don't you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You've got us all on the right tone there. At this time, we'll have a public comment. If you wish to do it now, or at the item that you signed in for, you can have it either way. The first one is Paula Wickerstam. I butchered that up. Do you want to speak now, or?
Um, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. You have 15 minutes. Let them turn on the 15 minutes.
15 minutes? No, I'm not going to talk that much.
I'm sorry. Take that back.
That's three, right?
Three minutes, please.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, I've been following this issue for quite some time now. It's not a new issue. It's been going on since my neighbors were going to school at Brown Elementary. And now my neighbors are deciding where to send their children to school. And I think my next-door neighbor just moved because we're zoned for Brown Elementary, and it is the most overcrowded school in the district. My child does complain about the overcrowding, by the way. My main question and point is, you know, we're, there's a lot of anger towards the school board in the community, which is understandable, given their history, but where's the anger towards our local governments? According to what I know, it's not the school board's job to go crawling to the public for funding. That's the job of the government. Where's our county commission? Where are our mayors? Where's the city council? What are their solutions to this overcrowding problem? They're the ones that are supposed to create funding. They're the ones that are approving all of these housing developments without tying any funding to the facilities we need for schools, parks, roads, all of those things, fire departments. Where's our local government? Why aren't they doing anything? And I know that's not a question for you guys, because you guys are in charge of spending the money, not creating it. So that is really what I wanted to say. We need to get a group of people together and go to our governments and say, "What is your problem? Why are you leaving it to the taxpayers to come up with the money when we're not the ones that created the need for this or the problem? But we're being the ones left to fix it." The school boards didn't have to come up with ballot initiatives to come up with money. The developers should be paying their share while they're building the houses. Each of those people buying a house should be paying towards the construction of a school. Nobody's addressing this issue, and it's very frustrating. We can't wait a year for funding. We need it now. We needed this school 15 years ago. Not next year. Not in 10 years. Now. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next is Lori Watson.
Or maybe Lucy?
Or Levi?
Okay, Levi.
Sorry.
Those two letters can make one, yeah.
Yeah, totally. Okay. Okay. I'm here on behalf of Mount Rose K through eight. As you know, we are the only K through eight in the whole city, I think. I believe so. We're the oldest school in the whole city. And the plan, we're severely overcrowded. And the plan, we have a middle school, it's not even three years old, but what's happening is, we had a six-point plan, but the only real thing that's going to happen is that we're going to get rid of our middle school. Now, our middle school is really, really successful. Like, we have numbers, and I have data on our seventh and eighth grade, that shows that our curriculum is far exceeding every other high school. And I'm looking at mathematics. So, the mathematics program at Mount Rose Middle School is a math seven-eight for the seventh graders and an algebra one for the eighth graders. Now, the data that I have here shows that we're doing just as well as, we're actually third in the district last year for the algebra one final, and we missed it by one point. Our data shows that we are, we have a successful program, and they're trying to get rid of it. And I watched the October 5th meeting here, and at that meeting, Dr. McClurey, who's not here, was very concerned about equity in education. And I believe that my, my children go to Mount Rose, my son is in the eighth grade, and he is flourishing. He was already high, and he's getting even higher. My daughter's in second grade in the TWEE program, and I don't want her to have to take a step down and go to our zoned middle schools when she gets there. It seems like we, in the district, we always talk about data-driven decisions, and what's planned for Mount Rose Elementary is going directly against data-driven decision-making. It's a catchphrase in the district, and it's not being, I have tons of data supporting our middle school yet, and in math, science, and English, and it's going to be taken away from us. It's a phase-out, a three-year phase-out, but I believe that it can stay, and I believe that it should stay, because, and also in your meeting, it talked about bringing people into the core from the periphery, and that's exactly what we're doing. Targeted programs in the core that can relieve some stress on the peripheral schools and actually help out, and, I don't know. I'm just saying that the, the district should re, if you guys make the decision, that we should make the decision to keep the Mount Rose Middle School in place.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
All right.
Okay. Next is Lucy Watson. Did you want to speak now, or later?
She'll speak now.
Oh, okay.
If you don't mind, I'm going to pull over her chair. She's a little one. I do have translation, if anybody would like a copy.
Young lady, you have three minutes.
Me llamo Lucy V. Jamie Watson. Mi escuela es Mount Rose K through eight Academy of Languages. Yo estoy en el segundo grado y mi hermano está en el grado ocho. Nosotros vamos a la escuela Mount Rose y la amamos mucho. Mi hermano es un buen estudiante y yo quiero ser como él. Yo quiero algún día tener mi certificado de bilingüe y también quiero ir a la universidad. Ser un estudiante de Mount Rose es muy importante para poder ser un buen estudiante y para aprender a hablar español. Gracias por tu atención.
Thank you very much. And next is Hannah Throer. That sounds familiar. Are you a teacher in the district?
Yes, sir, I am.
Yeah, yeah. I thought so.
The green button? Just nothing. Okay. That made me cry.
And now I have to talk. I am here to represent the parent group at Mount Rose Elementary. I am a teacher in the district, but that's not the facility that I am speaking in at this moment. We have for you today 25 letters from our parents. We just had a PTA meeting last night, and last night, our PTA meeting was a community service meeting, and so our students and our parents all came together to work on four different community service outreach things for the different groups in our community. And it was just amazing to see our middle school kids acting as the liaisons for our school. They're there, leading this event, they're facilitating this wonderful community outreach service project, and it speaks to the fact that middle school, we know, can be a little tricky of a time. I don't look forward to it with my own kids, just because they get really loud, really dramatic. It's a really rough couple of years. And at Mount Rose, our, our elementary school students transition into leaders in that middle school grades. And it's remarkable to see the work that they do within the, within the school. They have empathy for the younger kids, and it's, for the bilingual program, it's extremely important that the middle school program stay. It's two years that they cannot afford to maybe have a program at Swope, or maybe have language at another school. The TWEE program is not just Spanish. It's content areas in the Spanish language. They're building academic Spanish. And it's extremely important that they not lose those two years. That we build a program for them, not just for middle school, but for high school as well, where we're ready for them. They need to have programs where their, classes where they're learning translation. They're going to be highly, highly successful, as we see with Lucy. It makes me cry, just because it's amazing. She's a second grader, and she, Spanish is not her first language, and she's going to be ready. She's going to be amazing. And my son is in second grade, my daughter will be going into kindergarten next year, and it's, it's frightening to me to, to hear from teachers that we're telling them today that the middle school program is probably gone, yet we haven't even had our parent meeting. Our parent meeting with our area supervisor is today, tonight, and this board meeting is even before that. And so it's just, it's very disheartening to know that we have, you know, a huge concern, and that perhaps it's not even being heard. So, on behalf of the parents at Mount Rose, I'd love to hand these 25 letters over to you. There's a couple articles in there about why a K-8 model is so valuable for middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Okay, that's all the cards I had. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move right on to approval of the agenda.
I move to approve, President Mayor.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries unanimously. Then we'll move on to item 2.01, Presentation by Staff and Discussion by the Board Regarding the Draft and Proposed Washoe County School District Strategic Blueprint for Student Growth and Overcrowding, which includes various possible scenarios and solutions such as school construction funding, rezoning, school calendar adjustments, multi-track year-round, and schedule changes, double sessions, and recommendations to manage future growth. This is for information and discussion only. Kristin McNeil and Pete Etzer.
Thank you, President Mayor. I'm going to open up with kind of today's purpose, so we understand what our goal is here today. Today's purpose is to show you our best professional opinion of how we prioritize current construction funding, and how we would prioritize the new funding that we would desperately need. There is no secret that Northern Nevada is bursting with opportunities for businesses that is resulting in growth and further overcrowding of our current schools. We have been tasked by the Public Schools Overcrowding and Repair Needs Committee to share the Washoe County School District vision of what additional money we need to lay the foundation for school district that addresses our currently overcrowded schools and support the new growth coming our way. Additionally, they want to know how we would spend any new money if we received it. What are our specific priorities? All departments worked collaboratively together to come up with this strategic blueprint to answer that very question. To best ensure we meet the needs of every child, we are more than cognizant that the decision we make today will impact our community for decades to come. Today, we will review the traditional school construction model of chasing growth and ideas from the Cunningham Group. We will then introduce our strategic blueprint for overcrowding and repairs, our best thinking about how to prioritize limited resources. We will also share with you our ideal budget, what we feel it would take to build enough classrooms and facilities to do more than just meet our basic needs, what it would take to truly support a higher level of teaching and learning for every student in Washoe County School District. And we'll start today with some of our guiding principles and how we arrived at this strategic blueprint. And number one was student safety. As we do this work, the first and foremost thing in our mind is student safety. And student safety stretches beyond just the classroom. When we talk about student safety, we're talking about the ability for kids to play on the playground and not be overcrowded, the ability for kids to be able to eat lunch and not rush, because there's so many kids to get through a lunch line, and still ensure maximizing instructional minutes during the day. We'll look at how kids go to the bathroom, and what, what does that look like when you have five third-grade classes moving in and about lunch, and then fifth-grade classes using the bathroom? And how long does the kid have to wait just to do the business of daily operation of schools? So, safety involves a myriad of things, not just what we think in traditional sense of safety. When we look at maximizing student achievement, educational quality, and equity within the district, we know that through research, the building makes a difference, and I can say that as a principle. Kids, sometimes for some kids, it is the safest place that they have. It is the warmest place that they have. And so we have to ensure that not only are we addressing what's going to happen with growth, but we still have to maintain the existing buildings that we have for the students that we serve. Operational and district existing school buildings, we know there's a great need, and we'll talk about the need for those buildings today, but as we address this, our goal here is not to sacrifice the needs of existing schools to build new schools. There's two tasks at hand. We need to attack growth, and we still have to maintain what we have. When we look at disruptions to families, you know, this is one of the heartfelt things that happens in the community when you start talking about multi-year, year-round. So as a former principal and a teacher, I understand that pain for parents, because it's taxing on their lifestyles and what they're used to. But I can also speak to it as a parent of a, as a single mom having a kindergarten on track four, and that wasn't my track. So we understand what disruptions could happen if we have to go to multi-year, year-round, so we don't take that lightly, and understanding the needs of our community and our parents. And of course, double sessions. And double sessions, for those of you who don't know, at some point in time, and we've had double sessions here at one point, a long time ago, if I'm right, Trustee Mayor, Ed Reed, right? And Clark, when they were faced with this, double sessions means that one school has two sets of kids. You go early, early in the morning, and then there's a break, and then you have another session of school, because you cannot fit that many kids in the building. So you split the school in half, and you have two school days. Well, we still are kind of rural. When you were in Clark on double sessions, kids were heading to the bus stop at 5:00 in the morning. And I don't know about people think here, but I know there's snow in the morning, it's cold. That's a lot early for any child to be standing at a bus stop on double session. So our goal here is to not be in a situation where we will be faced with double session in the years to come, and we have to be proactive, because when we think about what that looks like and the time it takes to build a school, we're talking about kids who are in the third and fourth grade now. We're looking, projecting ahead. So we're going to look at some of those issues as we address it in our blueprint, and our goal today is hopefully we can come to a conclusion about our vision for our kids. With that, I'll hand it over to our Chief Operating Officer, Pete Etzer.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. And today, I'm joined by Randy Baxley, who is our school planner and demographer, because we're going to kind of do a little bit of an interactive presentation, so we're going to be switching back and forth a little bit between the presentation and some, really, I think, informative GIS information that Randy has. So, developing this strategic blueprint, as Superintendent Davis says, has been a process. You know, we've brought two previous plans to you, the traditional plan, the Cunningham Group plan, and we're today going to be talking about the strategic blueprint for Washoe County School District for your, for you to take a look at. I also need to mention that this school funding issue is nothing new. I mean, this has been going on, obviously, trying to find a sustainable revenue source to supplement what we have in property tax for almost a decade. And we know the success, or really non-success, that we've had over the past decade. And because of that lack of funding, as the Cunningham Group called it, we're really facing what he called the perfect storm. A school district that's at maximum capacity, a school district that's facing growth, maybe a lot of growth, and not having the funding to be able to deal with it. That's what we're facing. So with that said, we'll kind of just dive right in. This is the traditional school construction plan that we've been talking about for quite some time. Now, again, I want to recognize, this is for nine years. It's from school year 2016 through 2024, so nine years. We kept it at nine years instead of 10, just because that's where we had our growth projections. We wanted to stay consistent with the growth projections that have been done regionally. So again, this was three new high schools, four new middle schools, nine new elementary schools, in addition to Demone Ranch High School. You've seen this before. $887 million. And if we add in the school repairs of $20 million a year, the school renovations at $5 million a year, we end up with a grand total of almost $124 million a year, of what the total need would be in traditionally building schools, as we've always done in Washoe County. Unfortunately, the, the traditional plan has led us in the past, due to inadequate funding, to, as Superintendent Davis said, chase growth, rather than really manage growth. And with our limited resources, we've had to predominantly put a lot of those resources into the growth areas. And we've never had the proper funding to actually maintain our existing schools and build new schools at the same time. So it's always been a pendulum kind of going back and forth. The other thing I want to mention is the little asterisk on the bottom that says that based on the Epic 1.7% growth rate, everything you're going to see today is based on the 1.7% growth rate. That's approximately 1,000 students a year that would be coming to the Washoe County School District over the next nine years. So, we'll talk about what it means if we have more growth going forward. Next slide. So these next slides are just a reminder for you. You've heard of complete presentation on the Cunningham Group Plan. So this is the recommendations for the high schools, and I won't go through all the recommendations unless you want me to specifically talk about some of those in the Cunningham Plan. But one thing I want to mention really fast is, in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the Cunningham Group logo. Whenever you see that logo, that means that's his slide. These are not Washoe County School District recommendations or slides. Those are directly from the Cunningham Group. So that's high schools. Again, middle schools, and these are, again, are just for your reminder of what he recommended in elementary schools. So does anybody want any specifics on, on those?
Anybody have any questions?
So the last slide on the Cunningham Group, or one of the last slides I want to talk about, is the other pressures that he says we would be facing, and I think it's important to spend a few minutes and just talk about these. The first one is, "A trend line for growth of individual education plans," or IEPs, indicating a potential long-term need for more dedicated spaces. When we talk about individual education plans, I think, you know, that can include specialized programs that serve a multitude of students within our district, a real cross-section of our district. It can include gifted and talented programs. It can include autism classes, early childhood programs. It can include medically fragile student classes. So it really affects a great number of students in our district, and it does put pressure on our schools to have that additional space to meet those needs. But what more critical and important need could we have as a district to meet those needs? The second one is, is the 2.4% growth model moves problems up to five years. As the Cunningham Group said, if we go from 1.7% growth rate to 2.4, and those are the two growth rates that the Epic study focused on, if we go from 1.7 to 2.4, that moves all of our nine-year, 10-year projections shown in this presentation up to five years. Okay? The third one is, "Diversity balance may impact some decisions." That's been true forever as a, as a school district, and that could be true going forward. And as the Cunningham Group said, "Our capacity issues are really hitting our elementary schools and middle schools first, and also some of our outlying high schools." But our main focus, as he's repeatedly said, should be on avoiding double sessions, as is in our guiding principles. And lastly, there's a cost for multi-track year-round schools, and we know that. So the Cunningham Group also put into their presentation implementation milestones. This is basically a prioritization or phasing of all his recommendations. When it says years, that's not really reflective of being able to say we need it next year, or we'd even be able to provide it next year. We realize we don't have the money to build these improvements right now, so it's not a yearly basis, but it is kind of a prioritization of his recommendations. Okay, so this is the last slide in the Cunningham Group. And what I've done here, if you look in the red, those numbers in red are actually numbers that I have changed from the Cunningham Group presentation. And the reason we change those numbers is just to make it consistent with the prices we've been showing for the cost of construction for new schools. So rather than using the Cunningham numbers, which were higher, we've, we've reflected the numbers we're using throughout the presentation. So $110 million for a high school, $55 million for a middle school, and $23 million for an elementary school. So if you look at the bottom of that, you'll see also the school repairs I've added in at $20 million a year. Now, that was assumed in the Cunningham Plan, too. He just assumed that that was going to be funded out of the existing revenues we had, and he recognized that any of the growth would be outside of their existing needs of that $20 million a year. So if you look at the total need, it's approximately $104 million a year under the Cunningham Plan. Now, that being said, the Cunningham Plan focused on enrollment. He did an amazing job. I, I, my hat goes off to Tim Defoe and his team for the incredible work he did in such short order. But he really couldn't go into the details of classes and classrooms and look at exactly how much money we put into all the schools that we have in the core and all the work we've done. He really had to focus on the big picture of looking at the enrollment numbers, and that's how his, his presentation was put together. But I really believe that work was incredibly invaluable to us, because I do not think we could have got to where we are with this strategic blueprint that we're going to be providing you today without hearing from someone, a national and international expert in this field, to really look at us and give us some out-of-the-box thoughts. So this has been extremely valuable. And with that said, we'll go to the next slide, which brings us to our draft strategic blueprint. And I really, first of all, I just have to spend some time here just to thank our Capital Projects team and our growth team for really the effort they put in on this. This has been a Herculean task, that normally I think you would spend months on, but we've been able, trying to do it in weeks, and it's really been a lot of hours. And I want to thank, first of all, Randy Baxley here, because, I mean, he's really the one that's dived into the numbers to see what it means to have how many seats at each school, and really to crunch those numbers hard. And I want to thank Chris Cobb, Joe Kabeka, Riley Sutton, Mike Boster, Tiffany Young, Chad, Troy, and Debbie, our area superintendents, and Kristin for the incredible work. I mean, it really has been a lot of, of time, and I just thank them for their efforts on this.
You know, they deserve a round of applause.
And I would just like to thank them, too, because when they generate ideas, we have lots of questions, and we become a firing squad, because we know that people will ask tons of questions. And every question we ask, they had an answer, and, and so just thank you for being thoughtful about the answers you provided us also.
Thank you. So again, we really kind of crunched into the nitty-gritty of the numbers. We had to do an acknowledgement of all the special programs, those federally mandated programs, all of those programs we have that impact our schools, as the Cunningham Plan said, and, and the specialized IEP programs that can be out there. So we'll dive right into the Washoe County School District draft strategic blueprint, and this is the phasing that we're recommending and our recommendations. So again, we agree 100% with the Cunningham Plan. Addition to Demone Ranch High School, right now is our top priority. We also are recommending three new high schools. And, but here's the difference. We are not recommending the closing or conversion at this time of Sparks High School or Worcester High School. Rather, we are planning for the future expansion and renovation of both schools. And specifically, I'll go through these, and we'll get into a little bit more detail. So first, again, addition to Demone Ranch High School, you'll see Phase One. Now, this plan shows three phases. So Phase One, the only thing I think I even have on Phase One is addition to Demone Ranch High School. The other additions are the recommendations, again, for the 2016 to 24, 2024 timeframe, nine years, would be the Cold Springs High School, the first phase. timeframe, nine years, would be the Cold Springs High School, the first phase. Now, we recognize we need about 600 seats right now out in that area. So what we're recommending is that we build kind of the high school like you did in the Bonny Ranch High School, where you build the first phase, and then you later come back and do the addition. Now, it would be wonderful if we could build a whole high school at one time. You know, you can obviously save money building a school at one time, but with our limited resources, we realize it's probably not going to be feasible. The second one is a South McCarran Butler Ranch area high school. Now, the ideal location of this would be something like in the Meadowwood Mall Park Lane area, or the Ranch Hera, probably a lot of our price range, but that would be an ideal location. But it could also be in that Butler Ranch area where Donner Springs Elementary School is, in that general vicinity. The third high school is a Wild Creek area high school, or just saying someplace in that area, and that would be, as in the Cunningham Plan, a replacement to HUG High School. Now, the existing HUG High School would be repurposed in this plan to be a career tech or a JROTC public safety-type high school, where we would utilize the improvements that are going into HUG's High School at this time with the Signature Academy. That would fit very well with this repurposing. Now, one thing I want to specifically say on this is that you're going to see a lot of these show Phase 3 growth dictated. And I think a principle in this plan is, is that we know we don't have the money now to do a lot of these improvements. And when we do start receiving money, the word I kind of want to keep using is nimble. We have to be reactive, and we have to be nimble to where that growth is coming. And whatever is the highest priority is where we would have to try to go address that need. So I'll be probably saying that several times in this presentation, but that is kind of a, a key word, is that we have to be nimble and reactive. Now, one thing I want to stress, too, is we've given you a handout. And the handout that you have that shows high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, basically shows the impacts of every recommendation that we're making today. It shows what schools are relieved as far as their current enrollment, and how this affects the Washoe County School District. So I recommend that you really look at that, because it really shows the work that Randy and team have done as far as what these school recommendations mean. Now, we also wanted to go out past nine years, because we realized that a plan is not going to be just nine years, and all of a sudden everything comes to a hint, a end, and we say high fives, and we're done. We recognize that, you know, we have to continue planning for the future. So one is, and the last in this 2016-2024 plan, is the strategic purchase of Sparks High School properties. And when I talked about wanting to, a future expansion and renovation of both high schools, Sparks High School, we would recommend that we rebuild in place. And I think, as Tim Defoe said to the Cunningham Group, that any school district that has ever sold off property later has probably regretted it. Especially as we look in the urban core of Reno, it's going to get harder and harder to try to find that kind of property. So we think that's extremely valuable property. And I'm going to have Randy bring up a slide. This is Sparks High School. And it's kind of hard to see, especially from the back, but in the middle of Sparks High School, you'll see some properties there that are kind of outlined. Well, this last year, we were fortunate enough to pick up the last piece of property from the Sweeney family. So it's all green now, kind of in the middle. Right there where the arrow is, was the Sweeney property. So we were able to acquire that. So, in the past, we had quite a few residential properties right in the middle of the Sparks High School property. Now, what we're recommending going forward is the purchase of, it's approximately about 15 properties in the lower right-hand corner, that as those properties become available, that we would try to pick some of those up. Now, we've looked at the ownership. Some of them right now are owned by banks. And I've driven through there, and I saw one that looked like it was boarded up. So I think, you know, as they become available, we would suggest over the next nine years, we start strategically purchasing those properties. So then, in 10-year-plus timeframe, we could reconstruct and expand Sparks High School. We recognize one of the biggest deficiencies right now to have a full-size, comprehensive high school is parking. We're hundreds of parking spaces short even at this time. So acquiring this property would help us in that endeavor. We'd also possibly look at a joint use agreement with the Washoe County Library, you know, that's up in the upper right-hand corner, where we could use their parking lot during the day, and they could use our property possibly at night. And across the streets, the Larry Johnson Center, possibly, we could do the same thing. So anyway, this is one of our recommendations, and the nine-year plan is to start strategically acquiring this property. So again, the 2025-plus plan, the 10-year-out plan, is expand and renovate Sparks High School, expand and renovate Worcester High School. And the second phase, as we talked about, to the addition to Cold Springs High School. Any questions on the high schools?
Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. When you're talking about this, are we talking about leveling Sparks High School as it is now, and building a completely new plant?
You know, we have not gone that far yet, Trustee Rosenberg. We have talked about that option. And you would basically build the school, possibly where the football field and baseball field is now, and then, you know, just kind of like how professional baseball teams do it. You build in the parking lot, and then you level the school and build that the parking lot. That's one option. Or we renovate the existing school and expand on to it. I think that's a whole architectural study that we'd have to look into. But one or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? You have to, if you rebuild it, you have to save that slat in the stage that I carved my initials in.
You know, I want to kind of say on the high schools really fast, before we leave the high schools, one of the guiding principles that Trustee Davis hit upon was avoiding double sessions. And, I'm sorry, I said Trustee Davis. I'm sorry. Superintendent Davis. It has been a long days. And I'm fighting a cold, so I apologize if you see me drinking during this. I'm fighting something. At our last Public Schools Overcrowding Repair Needs Committee, you know, we talked about double sessions. And I found a story that I just want to share with you really fast, that one of the, the representatives from the city of Reno, Dylan Shaver, talked about his experience of going on double sessions while he was in Clark County at middle school. And he, as Superintendent Davis mentioned, he had to be at school at 5:55 a.m., and he went to 11:55 a.m. And when you kind of put that into terms in Washoe County School District, where we are both an urban and a rural school district, when we look at some of our longest bus routes, from Pleasant Valley to Dipoli, or from Cold Springs to Cold Springs Middle, we have many, many bus routes that are over 90 minutes, minutes in length. And we have some that are approaching around two hours. So if you think of a 5:55 a.m. start, and you think of a, a child being at a bus stop waiting for a school bus at 4:15 to 4:25 in the morning, and you think of a parent getting their child ready for school at 3:45, or whatever in the morning, and I shouldn't even say the morning, it's obviously, that's the middle of the night. And I mean, I was, I was sharing this with the Sparks Quanis Club last night. And even now, I, you know, you get emotional even thinking about it, because I can't even, you know, do that visual of that child standing at a bus stop at 4 o'clock in the morning. But that's, that's what we'd be facing. In the afternoon session, you know, we, well, let me say this. That child gets out at 11:55 a.m. So now you, you could have students that were left unsupervised, or many left unsupervised all afternoon. And then the second session, obviously, in Clark County, they started at 12 and went to like 6 o'clock to try to not interfere with evening activities, sports, and other events. It's really, there's nothing positive we can possibly say about double sessions. And I've given this presentation probably in one form or another 60 times, and I've never heard anybody give me anything positive to say about double sessions. So, thank you. Moving on to middle schools, this is a little easy, a little easier. We're recommending three new middle schools. Our top priority in Phase 2 would be a Sun Valley area middle school. Right now, this has been needed for quite some time. We have students currently split between, I believe, Trainer and Sparks Middle School. It really kind of divides the community. And providing a middle school where those students could all in the community go to one middle school is so important. And it also, when you read on your handout about the impacts that school would have, it relieves a lot of schools. The other two middle schools that are very much needed is one in the Arrow Creek area, and one in the Spanish Springs area. Both, again, Phase 3 growth dictated, but I know they're both needed, and they're both desired by the community. And then, consistent with the Cunningham Plan, the 2025 10-year-out plan, it would be the expansion of O'Brien Middle School. So that's middle schools. On elementary schools, you know, the first recommendation, and we're going to go in more detail on this, is that elementary schools would be converted to a multi-track year-round calendar according to the conversion process that has been developed by staff and approved, you know, the conversion threshold with the Board of Trustees. And with that, I want to turn this over to Deputy Superintendent McNeil to kind of go in more detail on that.
To articulate one of the biggest differences from the Cunningham Plan and our strategic blueprint as it relates to elementary school is that our recommendation is not to put every school on multi-track, and to follow the process that we have established to look at if schools should be on multi-track.
Thank you Superintendent Davis. Members of the board, Kristin McNeil, Deputy Superintendent for the record. Thank you, Pete. So I'm not only speaking as a deputy superintendent, but I'm also going to be speaking as a former teacher and former principal that has had to work in a multi-track system, and who has experienced this as well as Superintendent Davis as a parent. So one thing to know is that multi-track is not a year-round education by itself. It's a calendar that is used to increase the total amount of students capable of being at the school throughout the academic year. It does provide for the full use of a building, when the option to build a new school may not at that time be a viable option. As well, it should be noted that while we truly appreciate the Cunningham's report and their information, and their time and effort put into this report, the development of the recommendations around multi-track may not be what's right for our school district at this time. We have given this a considerable amount of thought, as well as listened to our parents, our staff, and community. We therefore feel that it is better to have a clearly articulated plan and delineated plans as far as individual schools, on a school-to-school basis, rather than moving many schools at one time to a multi-track calendar. We understand that we will be working with community agencies and organizations as far as different types of programs that would be available. As well, let me be clear, when looking at programs and space, it is critical that we must also follow state and federal guidelines for programming. But even more importantly, it is the right thing to do for our children and our families and students, that they need to be going to their schools that are closest to them, and that are closest to their neighborhood programs. Again, Pete and Randy are going to be talking about a, a specific example as far as Lynn's Elementary School, and something that has recently occurred as far as the planning for these schools.
As Randy comes back up, in our recommendations going forward, elementary schools, we're actually showing two elementary schools, rather than the Cunningham Plan showed one. We're showing one in the South Meadows area, and we're showing one in the North Valley-Spanish Springs area. And Randy's just brought up a, a map. And basically what this, this is GIS mapping, and this is some amazing information that we've been able to get out of this. We know where every student lives. We know where, what school they go to. We know how many students that are zoned for a school go to that school, or where other students that are coming from outside the zone are coming from. I found some interesting information out of this when I was talking to Randy, that 19% of our students right now go to, elementary school students actually go to a school outside their normal zoning. Same with high schools, 19%. And I believe middle schools was at 13%? So that's, that's a large percentage of students that actually go to schools outside their normal zone. And we want to give you one example, and I'm going to kind of show you on the screen.
Pete, while you're doing that, what do you mean outside of their normal zones? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a question.
That's all right. I'll excuse you this time. Just like when I had you in first grade, just blurt right out.
So I think Randy can give you some specific examples of this, like how many students, like, are zoned to go to Brown Elementary School, or zoned to go to Double Diamond, that are actually attending another school. So they're going to a school on a variance. And Randy, maybe you have some numbers as far as like Brown or Double Diamond you could actually give. This is a, we call this the Rand McNally map for, for, for good reasons, if you all remember those from years gone by. But this shows every school, shows how many students are actually going to that school from other schools that, you know, normally we'd be going to, or that are zoned for a school that are going somewhere else. It kind of works both ways. Maybe, Randy, you can explain it better than I can.
Well, I pretty well explain it. Example I have here is for Brown Elementary School. And these are all for, from our county this year. What we looked at is, you know, from the geocoding, we know how many kids are zoned for a particular school in any of the three levels. And from our student records, we identify where are those children actually going to school at. So if the example of Brown here, which is going across, of the students that are zoned for Brown, as you see, like, there's 29 of those students are actually attending Double Diamond, seven at Dodson, eight at Donner Springs. You see, going all the way across of all the different schools. And what you wind up with, you know, over here, for Brown Elementary School actually has 1,114 students zoned for the school, kindergarten through fifth grade. Of that, they've got 900, they have an enrollment of 913. So they've actually got over 200 of their kids who are zoned to go to their school are actually attending other schools. And, you know, being able to do that, we can also do it the, you know, the other way. We can see how many kids are coming to a school from other schools. For example, Double Diamond here, going down, we know that 29 of Double Diamond students are actually come from Brown, you know, four from Hidden Valley. Go all the way down and see where all of the, a school's students are actually coming from to get an idea of how many zoned students they have, and how many of their enrollment are actually because of variances, programs, and things like that.
Is that it?
Okay.
Anything else, Lomond?
Keep going. I want to know your point, the point you're making with this.
May I ask a question in this sense, please?
Yes, go ahead.
For, and this may be either for Peter or for Randy. So does this include, I know that includes variances, but does it also include if a, if a student is there because of a special program or something? Does that include, is that included in that number as well?
It's, it's just a total number of, you know, how many students are, you know, where they're coming from, whether it's on variance, special program, or...
For whatever reason, right. Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
If we go back to the, the map. So on this map, every blue dot represents a family that has one or multiple children going to school. So that's what all those blue dots are, and these are where the children live. Now, I'm going to give you just a kind of a specific example when we talk about Double Diamond Elementary School, which we know is a very overcrowded school. So we've looked at a bunch of options. We continue to look at options of what we can do to relieve these schools. So here's Double Diamond Elementary School. This is Lynn's Elementary School. Now, Double Diamond is, is over the 120% conversion threshold. We know the overcrowding at that school. Now, we were looking at, could we move students to Lynn's Elementary School, which on an enrollment basis right now is at about 88% enrollment. So we have a little bit of capacity left at Lynn's. There's a couple of issues you run into. Now, the first issue is, you can see that right here are some students that are off, right on Virginia Street. They could cross Virginia Street and get to Lynn's. It's not too far of a distance. But all the other students that you have here are basically, it's a community. And this community, all these students are basically, a lot of them walking distance to Double Diamond Elementary School. You would have to take children and students away from basically that school and transport them almost by the school that they would normally be going to, to take them over to Lynn's. So obviously, there's a lot of impacts to that. Well, here's something else that happened, and this seems to happen a lot to us when we start talking about looking at rezoning. Last Friday, as we were talking about this, actually, a development application came into the city of Reno for a development called Summit Club. It's going to be built, right, multifamily, 584 multifamily units, right behind Summit Sierra Mall, right there, bordered by Mount Rose Highway and 395. What that does is, that is zoned for Lynn's Elementary School. So basically, all the existing capacity we had at Lynn's Elementary School will be taken by that new development. It goes from 88% capacity to 97% capacity. And we face this over and over again, as we've looked at rezoning as a community, to see, is there options to move these students to different schools? Even if we went to a multi-track at Lynn's, and we moved as many students out of Double Diamond as we could, we're not solving the problem. Lynn's would, or Double Diamond will still stay on a multi-track calendar going forward, based on the projections and number of students that are zoned for that school. So that being said, is why we're looking at a recommendation to build a new elementary school in that Double Diamond, Brown, Demone Ranch area. We need the school. Now, how that would be prioritized, that's hard to say. Again, it's growth dictated, because our number-one priority and our guiding principles is to stay off of double sessions. So we can't build a, a new elementary school to stay off multi-track when we're facing double sessions at so many schools. But I wanted to kind of give you this example, because that's what we're facing when we talk about rezoning. And I, I've mentioned to this board before, last year, when we looked at the one rezoning we did at Melton to Verdi to Westergaard, trying to take care of that capacity or utilize that capacity at Verdi, we ran into the exact same situation. A development came in called West Meadows Estates that took all the, the capacity we had at Verdi.
Any questions?
And I just want to add, one of the things we looked at as we discussed, and Pete and his group, like, just look at it numbers, moving kids. One of the things we wanted to stay away from was, if you move students, and then they build apartment complexes, and you got to move students again. We don't want to move kids two and three times during their schooling. Like, we believe the kids are having the opportunity to go through their elementary lives at their elementary school and not be moved back and forth.
Any other questions, Lomond?
And the last recommendation on this is the core school investment. And we agree wholeheartedly with the Cunningham Plan, that we need to invest money into our core schools. We're saying not only elementary schools, but also elementary middle and high. And we're also recognizing that rezoning will have to be done in that core schools, just because a lot of those core schools physically do not have enough classrooms to go into a multi-track calendar. We'll obviously always have to look at moving sixth grade to middle school if we can, but that could also exasperate our middle school issue. So it's going to be a combination on a school-by-school basis, as Deputy Superintendent McNeil said, of looking at a school and what the best options are.
Could I interject? You know, the Cunningham, when they were here presenting, they said there's a big bubble at third grade. at third grade. Has your revision of the Cunningham Plan into our strategic plan, has it looked at how that, you're going to look at middle school and then?
Yes, we do. Our, our projections, we do 10-year projections, actually we can go out further. Does that on a year-by-year basis, so it tracks that bubbles that's going through systems, it moves out of the elementary schools, hits the middle schools and then hitting into the high schools towards the end of that, that period.
And it's, it's a large bubble.
Right. It, it goes back to, you know, a huge burst we had in bursts here in Washoe County over a two-year period, happened about seven or eight years ago. I will mention the fact that it tied to that same timeframe as the New Year's blizzards we had about that time.
Okay. No reason needed.
All right, next slide.
Yes.
In light of that, Randy, I'm wondering about, I'm going back to the middle school slide and I'm thinking about that, that bubble you're talking about and our, and some of our overcrowded elementary schools that have large third grades. And so I'm thinking ahead and I see the middle school suggestions. I'm just kind of wondering where we are, where we are with DePoli because I know that that's the only middle school in the South Valley. So how is that going to be impacted by that bubble and how, how did you take that into consideration as you, as, as you all put this together?
Well, I said, the way we do the projections is, we don't do just, you know, a full set of, no, 10-year and divide it up by 10. We actually do the projections of one year at a time and then basically roll all the numbers over to do the next year. So we're doing basically the model 10 different times advancing it one year by each. So we're advancing that bubble through all, all of the schools and all of the grades each year during that timeframe. So yeah, it does hit DePoli, all the middle schools, you'll see a, you know, quite a jump at about year six or seven of the projections and then most of them will drop back down again some, but then start growing again or, or stay fairly stable at that point. So that is taken into account, I said, year by year for all of the schools.
Yeah, because I'm just having this vision of the, you know, two largest elementary schools or two of the largest elementary schools, there are third grades hitting DePoli at the same time. So that's kind of where my mind went in thinking about what other potential middle school needs might we have in the south part of the town, of the city, so that's.
But don't you have Arrow Creek, wouldn't that relieve DePoli Middle School?
The Arrow Creek Middle School is on there. That's to relieve both DePoli and Pine Middle School.
Both of them.
Right. It'll go a long way to helping out DePoli. It, it's unlikely that it's going to completely relieve DePoli as it put it back down, you know, below capacity, but it'll certainly make the situation a lot less dire than it's going to be without it.
And, and exactly where, have you gotten the property for that? In Arrow Creek, I know that property's worth lots of money.
We have a piece of property we've been looking at for a number of years. We're looking to try to obtain from the Forest Service. So on Arrow Creek Parkway, it's actually right next door to Huntsberger Elementary School. And we've had an application in to try to obtain that property for a number of years now. That process through Forest Service and BLM moves slower than a glacier, so.
And no sage grouse on that property?
No, I don't.
Which school, the paper brought that up. Which property that we have is that sage grouse affecting?
It was another piece of property that we were looking to obtain from the Forest Service at the northern end of Sun Valley. Another one we've had, it's an application we've had in for quite a number of years. Again, that process moves so slowly and we were looking to get an update on the, where they were with that and found out that, no, we say there's sage grouse there, you can't have it. That's basically where we are now.
Well, if they change their mind, tell them we'll name it Sage Grouse Elementary School.
All right. So again, on the 2025-year-plus plan, we would be looking at building new elementary schools as needed. We recognize, as, as Tim Defoe and the Cunningham Plan also recognized, that we're still going to have to build elementary schools with growth. We're not going to be out of the business, even if all the schools went to multi-track year-round calendar, we're still going to have to build new elementary schools going forward. So the next slide basically puts all of these recommendations together on one slide. So you're going to see on here the ongoing, again, on the multi-track year-round calendar at necessary elementary schools. And you'll see Phase One, in addition to Monty Ranch, Phase Two, Sun Valley Area Middle School, and then you're going to see a whole bunch of Phase Three, again. These are not prioritized, they're just in the order of high school, middle school, elementary school, because we need to be nimble and responsive to the growth that occurs in the Truckee Meadows. And then again, at the bottom, ongoing strategic purchase of those Sparks High School properties. So the cost, the cost of the strategic blueprint.
Trustee Frank.
Thank you. Thank you, President Mayor. On the previous slide, I'm just looking at Phase One, Phase Two, and then there's a whole bunch of Phases, Phase Three. I'm just kind of curious about not, why there are not more Phase Twos? Is it more of the financial issue, the availability of funds? Can you explain that just so we can understand?
Yeah, that's kind of how we looked at it. We know that regardless, right now, we need these, most critical at this time period. So whatever money comes in first, this is what we'd want to prioritize right now because right now we need these desperately. And so then going forward, we need all of these, I'm not saying we don't need a lot of them, but these are our top priorities and that's why we've put them in that phasing.
Pete, President Mayor, may I speak?
Trustee Rigerio.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for asking for permission.
Thank you. So, um, so we, you, we would not have an elementary school in Phase One?
In our recommendations, that's correct.
Talk, talk to me about that.
Because right now, to relieve elementary schools at this time, we would utilize the multi-track year-round calendar as needed to relieve the elementary schools. We do not have that option at the middle schools or high schools. And so what we're facing, as again in our guiding principles, is to put our resources as best possible to avoid double sessions. An elementary school would only be put in that prioritization list if it was facing double sessions.
So what school, what schools would be immediately impacted for a multi-track year-around?
Right now, we have six schools that are impacted that are above the conversion threshold that are right now writing school overcrowding management plans. So those six are Brown Elementary School, Double Diamond Elementary School, Sepulveda Elementary School, Maxwell Elementary School, Mount Rose and Kate Smith Elementary School.
To add, based on the process and what we're doing to determine if a school could go multi-track based on growth, we could build an elementary school in the south and they still trigger year-round. So building the school does not guarantee that any school doesn't go year-round, but it's based on growth and numbers. Like, we can't just say, we put a school up, you won't be year-round. That's not the truth. We'd have to still look at what we talked about in our guiding principles, safety, educational impact and all those things we delivered earlier. We just can't say if we build a school, you won't be year-round. That wouldn't be fair. We'd have to be transparent with the public about the process we utilize.
So let me ask the question, if we did build a school in South Meadows right now, would that relieve overcrow or multi-track at Brown and Double Diamond?
Do you want to answer that, Randy?
As far as immediately this year or next year, it could possibly, but if you're looking, you know, going out two, three years, you're remembering how long it's going to take to build an elementary school, more than likely about the time that school would open, it would probably open on multi-track and Brown and Double Diamond would still be on multi-track just because the, just the sheer number of kids we have down there. You know, I showed the, for Brown earlier, they have 2,100 students zoned, Double Diamond has over 1,000 zoned. Between the two schools, you're looking at close to 2,200 students down there just right now. And you talk about when you build a new elementary school, talking, you know, two, three years out, you could be looking at, you know, possibly 2,500, 2,600 kids, which by three schools, you're looking at, you know, 800 kids per school, which means they're all still going to be on multi-track.
So, so this, this is important information that we're talking about and that you're presenting because this has to be beautifully communicated to the families out there because we have been talking about building a school out there for the last couple of years and that it was our, our number one priority. But it sounds like after further study and looking at the financial needs and maybe the bigger picture, that even if we were to build a school out there, we would still see families on multi-track year-round. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, I really want to see the data on this and I think we're going to have to make sure we have a very clear picture when, when we present this to the community because it's, for me, it's terrible news because it's been the, the center of the conversations that I've been having with parents in the South Meadows community that an elementary school is our number one priority and our number one priority. So now we're saying, it's not our number one priority, you're going to a multi-track, even if we were to build a school, it wouldn't have an impact on keeping you off multi-track. So.
Let me, let me say this as far as, as what our guiding principles are and I give even a message to the parents at Brown Elementary School and Double Diamond Elementary School. We're facing right now, in the next four to six years on projections, if we use 120% conversion threshold at our high schools and middle schools also for double sessions, we're facing four high schools and we're facing three middle schools that could be hitting that conversion threshold, including the Monty Ranch High School. And so our, I guess a message I would give to the parents is, is that we are trying to keep those students at the middle school and high school level from getting on double sessions because both DePoli and Monty Ranch High School are facing that inevitably if we don't build new schools. So that is our number one priority, at least how we're looking at it and the recommendation we're making to you, is that that's where our resources should go. We would not be recommending multi-track year-round calendar if we had built elementary schools in the past and we weren't facing this situation. But when we look at it, we feel that double sessions is a much greater hardship on the community and the families than going onto a multi-track year-round calendar.
And I'll add on to what Pete's saying, as we look at how kids matriculate up, we know that that's an issue right now. These kids will eventually be at Damani Ranch High School and can Damani Ranch High School handle those kids? So we have a lot of number one priorities, is how do we prioritize all the number ones, right? Like, we are faced with a huge challenge. And as we do that, we are looking at how to handle that, not for just next year, two years. What does that look like as kids go through our system for the next couple of decades? And so there's a lot of information, but as part of the ending to this, we're going to talk about, once we get approved, how do we go out and get input from the community about this blueprint? So we're not leaving the community out, but we need to have that decision made here today before we craft a well-organized vision and plan to give not only to the community, but as we have to hand something out to our Public Schools Overcrowding Committee also. So we're right there with you.
Well, and I caution us from saying that it's a plan today or that we're going to make the, some sort of final approval with taking a plan out. I think it might be a strategy, but, you know, we need public input before we have a plan, we start calling it a plan. I don't want to say I'm approving any type of plan today without, without public input.
You ran off six schools that are going to be faced with multi-year calendar and you mentioned Kate Smith. Now, that's in the core. It's a small school. There's no way that school can go all year-round. I mean, there's not enough classrooms there for two kindergartens and things like that. I don't see how that one's on the list to go all year-round because it'd be impossible for that little school to go all year-round.
That, that's correct, President Mayor. There's two schools on that list, Mount Rose and Kate Smith, that cannot go onto a multi-track year-round calendar. Now, they are above the 120% conversion threshold. Kate Smith was actually a very late addition, so we have not actually had the overcrowding meeting yet at Kate Smith because it just kind of triggered. So what we're doing in those cases is we have to look at other options. So Mount Rose, you've heard, they're creating a plan that's not going to involve multi-track year-round calendar. Kate Smith is the same. We have to look at, can sixth grade go to middle school? Can we look at rezoning? We have to look at other options in those kinds of schools. So that's a perfect example and I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, it just struck me because I knew that that school's so tiny, you couldn't possibly put it on multi-track. Yes.
Just a clarification, you mentioned that in relation to Kate Smith and, and Mount Rose. I think when we're saying those six schools, we're not saying that they're triggering multi-track. What we're saying is they're, they are, they are reaching that threshold which, which initiates the process that we've outlined in our policy, which is for the parents and the principal and the community to get together and come up with a plan, overcrowding plan that could include multi-track. Am I getting that wrong or do you clarify that?
Well, it's kind of, sort of. This is a unique year. What the conversion threshold says is that when you reach that conversion threshold, we as a school district look at what options we can do to try to reduce that number, but if there's really no options for us, let's say moving sixth grade or rezoning, that, that school, when it reaches 120%, normally that next year automatically converts to a multi-track year-round calendar. Now, because this year is unique, because we're kind of starting process late, this growth, you know, we're trying to keep up with it, right? So we basically said, those schools this year that trigger can write a plan for next year and then not convert until the 17, 18 school year. But unless something drastic changes, those schools would automatically convert in the 17, 18 school year, those that can.
I appreciate you clarifying that because I think that that's important, that we're not talking about a conversion for the next school year, but that, that the committees that are working on a plan for next year, but at some point, what I'm hearing you say is, is likely that in the 17, 18 school year, that's going to happen.
If, if that plan is accepted by the superintendent and goes through the process. If the plan is not accepted, you're saying, well, you know, it just doesn't really meet the threshold, then yes, they could still convert next year if it's based on safety and the other reasons that have been outlined.
Trustee Rosenberg.
I think the important thing to recognize here is nothing happens in a vacuum. It all has ramifications on everything at all levels. And I think that the community has to recognize, this is not a cut and dried thing, that we can simply say, we'll do this and it'll take care of everything. It won't. We've got to consider all levels as we're doing this. And it's hard. We're facing much the same kind of thing at the university. We have huge enrollment and no classrooms. Where are we supposed to put them? Are we going to start classes at seven o'clock in the morning? I have eight o'clock in the morning classes. I don't think seven o'clock is going to work.
The university has had, you know, one advantage that we haven't had is they could raise their prices to out-of-state students and try to reduce enrollment. You know, we, we don't really get that option at the K-12, so.
What I'm trying, what I'm trying to get across is, the community's got to recognize that we're not doing anything here in a vacuum. We've got to consider all of the kids in all of our communities.
Absolutely.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, yeah, yes. I just want to reiterate, we started this off with saying this is our strategic blueprint that was a draft. We know that we are kind of in a perfect storm. We have a Schools Overcrowding Committee trying to generate questions of what to do, how much money do we need, what does that look like? And we need to be very strategic in a vision. I remember trustee Smith talked about that, like, we need to be very strategic in our transparency to the public about what it is we need, what we're going to do. But we have to come up with something. People are working on our behalf and we still have not really handed them something besides way pie in the sky. We need to narrow that down with a strategic focus so everybody knows what we're doing it, why we're doing it and what our guiding principles are as we look at educating kids over the next several decades.
Okay. Any other questions?
So this moves on into the cost of the strategic blueprint. Now, this is very similar to what you've seen before in the other plans. I'll just highlight just a couple additions. One, we have, as you can see, $4 million into the purchase of the Sparks High School properties as available. We reduced the core school investment from 100 million down to 50 million. We feel that, you know, the, as great a work as Tim Defoe did, he didn't know all the investments we've already put into some of those schools. We feel comfortable with the $50 million investment. So that's the number. And if you look again, adding in red, the school repairs at 20 million a year, we end up with a grand total of 103 approximately million dollars per year. Now, looking at that number, with our current funding, we've been talking about it, 35 million a year, we look at our needs at 103 million a year for the next nine years, leaves a funding shortfall of 68 million dollars a year approximately. So I want to just add this slide in really quick. Again, this is not just a nine-year plan, we're thinking about the future and obviously we're going to have to work with whatever growth comes, which we'll talk about more detail in the next slide. But for the 2025-plus, we're looking at the expansion again of Sparks and Looster, we're looking in addition to Cold Springs High School, the second phase, expansion of O'Brien Middle School and the new elementary schools as needed. Now, this next slide is one that, I'll give Riley the credit for the title here, the X-Factors, what keeps us up at night? Because this is one that really does. This is just a partial list of developments that we know of in this, this region and that could develop potentially, that could really help us, or that's not the right word, to actually make us exceed the 1.7% growth rate that we've been basing everything off of. This could bring us back to the 3% to 5% growth rates that we saw prior to the Great Recession. This is just, like I said, a partial list of developments. I mean, and it changes, it seems like, every day to week, for sure. We just heard that Lifestyle Homes is again, you know, resurfacing a lot of the projects they have out in Cold Springs. And when we add that to Woodland Village and Heinz Ranch, we're talking right now, that we know of, approximately 15,000 residential units in the Cold Springs area that could come online in not-too-distant future. And I want to kind of, next slide. I want to kind of talk about what that really means to us. And that little graphic on the right, I'm not sure if everybody saw that. It was kind of plastered on Twitter and Facebook. I saw it many times, and I added on here. It says, "Why Reno is America's Next Housing Boomtown." It was put out by thestreet.com. And it really focused on, you know, that Reno is a boom town right now. So while we know that all those developments that I just showed you, you know, that they will have and provide more bonding capacity to the school district, we also know that new growth does not pay for itself, at least in the micro sense of school buildings. Now, I can't, I'm not an economist, and I can't say what growth does in the macro sense. But I can tell you what it does in the micro sense of building school buildings. So this is, and this is not just a Tesla issue, or, you know, a Panasonic or Switch issue. This isn't just about the new development that's coming in now. This has been an issue with the Washoe County School District for many, many, many years. Growth has never paid for itself, and it comes to building that new school to go along with that new development that comes in. This slide is a slide that we developed, actually, for that South Meadows area in the presentation. But I've been using it in a lot of presentations, just to kind of get the message across. And I'll reiterate it today, that if a developer builds a new $300,000 home, that provides us approximately $5,000 in initial property tax bonding capacity on a 20-year bond. So for us to build a $23 million elementary school, and again, that's probably conservative, prices are going up, we would need 4,600 homes to be built. So we'd have the initial bonding capacity to build that elementary school. The problem is, is the impact of those 4,600 homes that get built. It basically has enough students coming out of that 4,600 homes, basically to fill two elementary schools, a fifth of a middle school, and a fifth of a high school. So if you add all that together, that's about $80 million in needs, and we got $23 million in bonding capacity. So it's a three or four, or even four to one shortfall that we're facing with these new developments. So when I show you that list of all these developments coming in with 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, whatever, homes coming in, this is what we could be facing. And so when I talk about being nimble, like, if you have a development that occurs in Verdi area and all of a sudden, all these homes are built, there's no way the existing Verdi Elementary School could even come close to handling that kind of development. And we would have to be forced possibly into looking at building more schools. So that's the situation. I just want to kind of express that to you. And I realize, it does keep me up at night. I mean, this is an issue that is very daunting.
Mr. Rosenberg.
I was a little late coming in, but I heard one of our public comments. What about the developer? Do we get anything from the developer land? Even a handshake might be nice, if there's a couple of bucks in it.
It's a complicated answer in a little ways. We do not receive impact fees. This has been brought up at the legislature for many, many times, and it's never really gotten the traction to actually implement impact fees. So most states, and I'll tell you this, we are kind of unique in that regard because Mike Bostner, our other school planner, could tell you clearly that when they call and they're doing their pro forma to develop their, their plan for building homes, they ask how much impact fees are. And when he tells them zero, they usually repeat the question two or three times to make sure they heard it right. Because they're used to paying impact fees in California or other states they're in. We have never had in the state, Northern Nevada, impact fees, at least in my knowledge. So we do not receive that. What we do receive from NRS is we can ask the developer to set property aside for us. That doesn't mean we get it for free, though. We have to pay fair market value for that land. And if we don't use it within 10 years, we actually have to offer it back to the developer. And we have had that triggered before, where we've received property and we weren't able to build the school because we didn't have the financing or need, and we had to offer it back. So it is very difficult right now. We do not receive free property. I'm not saying that all developers, some developers have given us the property that we've worked with very closely, you know, for long-term relationships with some developers who have provided us property. But oftentimes, we have to pay for it. So we do not receive money for the school. We don't even receive oftentimes the money for the land. And we still have to buy the water rights and all the other things that go with it, and we have to build the school. And I just say, you know, I've gone back and looked at a lot of the old handbooks and some of those that have been kind of dusted off now that were done before the Great Recession. And now, all of a sudden, we're facing these developments again. Maybe this is my interpretation of it, though, but oftentimes, those developers did not look at the infrastructure findings really with schools in mind, oftentimes. It was really looked at like sewer, water, roads, police, fire. And I think a lot of times, why schools were not included is because we had our funding source we used to build schools. And at that time, property tax, even though it wasn't sufficient to both maintain our existing schools and build new schools, when we were faced with growth, the money kind of pendulum went over to building new schools. And then, when the Great Recession hit, the money pendulum went back to, you know, fixing our old schools. But we had a resource to build new schools. Because of that situation that we faced during the Great Recession, where our property values crashed and our plummeted, and all of a sudden, we got reset at a lower level, we have had no bonding capacity to build schools over the last many years. So when we should have been outbuilding those elementary, middle, and high schools, we haven't built, and now we're behind. And so that's why we're facing this situation, and we don't have the resources, and we won't have for many years. $35 million a year is not going to be building us schools, especially when we have to maintain our existing. So, long answer, but that's...
It's depressing, thank you.
Yeah, I know. I wish I could give you more uplifting talk. So this is, this is a slide that we put together because this is the ideal funding of what we would need at the Washoe County School District to properly fund our school district. This is really what we would need. And we were asked by the Public Schools Overcrowding Repair Needs Committee for some information on some of these, so I want to share it with you today. So one, school construction that is needed to avoid multi-track year-round calendar. Okay, so what would it take for us to avoid it? Now, we have two elementary schools shown in the plan right now. Our original traditional plan showed that we needed nine. I've worked with Randy. We feel comfortable that right now, we could avoid multi-track year-round calendar if we built the other seven new elementary schools over the next nine years. So the cost of that is $161 million. So there's a cost to it. And that will be going out to the Public Schools Overcrowding Repair Needs Committee to say, here is what it is.
That's what we want.
This is our ideal plan. I mean, this is the ideal funding. This is the way we've always done it in the past, right? We've always built elementary, middle, and high schools. We've never said that we're not going to build elementary schools in the past. So this is something new because of the situation we're facing. So the second one is, we were also asked, what would it take to get rid of all the portable classrooms that we've been utilizing for so many years, with many of them being 30 and 40 years old, you know, that we've just been unfortunately having to utilize? We looked at this a couple ways. One, that $50 million core investment into our schools, we figured we could use that money to hopefully help replace a lot of those portables that are down in our core schools. So we didn't include those in this analysis. What we included is basically outside the urban core, looking at those dry portables that we have that were basically done before 2006. 2006 plus, we actually received, it's all been done through great grant funding through the state, that we've been putting in portables now that are good portables that have restrooms in them. Now, they're not ideal. There's lots of drawbacks, as we know with portables, the ramps and the maintenance and all the issues that come with portables. But we wouldn't be recommending at this time replacing those right now. But we have 26 elementary school and 52 high school dry portables outside the urban core that really need to be addressed. So there's three ways you could basically address them. One would be is to replace them with new schools. You know, that's what we're supposed to do, right? Use portables until you build a new school and you get rid of the portable. So we could do that. We could replace those dry portable classrooms with an elementary school approximately and a high school. Or we could do it with replacing each, at each school with a permanent classroom additions at each school. So that's about $63 million. Or we could replace all those dry portables with new portables with restrooms. When I say dry portables, that means without restrooms. So those are three options. You can see the cost of that. Now, the next one is administrative facility needs. We know that the students are coming regardless whether we build new schools or not, and we have to feed them, we have to transport them. We know that our nutrition services is at full capacity, and we need to do an expansion, which we've been working on. We know that the transportation yards need to be expanded. We have too many buses right now to fit even in the yards. We also know that anybody who's spending time at this administration building knows that, you know, we are at full capacity here, and this, this administration building is old. So Administrative Facilities Master Plan was actually done many years ago. And I put the cost of that in here because it really addressed our needs on the administrative side, both the administration building, our warehouse, our maintenance center, et cetera. This is the cost for administration. If we were to really properly, like I said, in the ideal plan to fund our school district. The last one I have in here is school repairs. As I've said many, many times, we have $240 million right now of critical needs in our district. And we are saying that $20 million a year to go toward those critical needs. Well, in an ideal plan, we would like to have a $50 million infusion to really go after a lot of our most critical needs on that $240 million list. So when we add all that together, we come up with basically $47 to $60 million a year that would be needed to do this ideal plan. And I'll show you kind of what that means in a second when we add it together with the other needs. So this is the, this is the sheet that you don't want to, we don't ever like to talk about, but we have to talk about. And that is, what if we don't receive any additional funding over the next nine years? Well, we have $35 million a year. We've said, one of our top principals going forward in this plan is that we need $20 million a year to keep our existing schools operating and function. Well, that leaves us $15 million a year. Now, I put on here, a high school costs $110 million, middle school 55, elementary school 23, in today's dollars, which we know are going up. So we can't even build an elementary school in one year. It would take us four years to build a middle school. We would have to save our money for eight years to build a high school. That's the reality we're facing. Again, we know that Damani Ranch High School addition is our top priority right now. Sun Valley Middle School is an extremely high priority. But again, we have to be nimble and responsive. And we, if we don't have any additional funding going forward, we're going to have to look at this and prioritize what is our highest need if we only have this much money going forward. We know there's other actions that obviously have to take place. Multi-track year-round would be a necessity at many, many schools. Rezoning as we can. And then double sessions, obviously, at both elementary, middle, and high schools.
You know, though, something that you never figure in when you're given all these dollars and cents things is the value of school. Now, my dad's cousin was on the Sparks School Board when they built Robert Mitchell School. And you take the price that they paid for Robert Mitchell School back then and multiply it by the number of years of service that Robert Mitchell School has had, that's a heck of an investment. Because back then, it was nil. And right now, if you had to build Robert Mitchell with the brick and tile and everything that it did, you'd pay a fortune compared to before. So it really is an investment that grows with time, if it's up kept.
And I've got to pay, you know, again, kudos to our maintenance staff for the incredible job they do to maintain our schools. When you look at our schools and how old they are, and our average age of a school in Washoe County School District's 39 years old, and you look at the condition of them, they've done a tremendous job to keep them in the condition they're in. So we build schools to last. We have to build schools to last. We have almost 100 schools. And, you know, and when we're talking about, even if we replaced one every other year, we'd be 200 years before we could replace our schools. So we're not replacing schools, right? So we, we need to build these to last. Now, we don't build, you know, excessively. We build solid schools. And that's, I think, the point that we often make. But these schools need to last. We have, like you said, Mount Rose, as one of our speakers said, is over 100 years old.
Yeah. You look at Reno High School and the architectural design and the stuff that's in that Reno High School, and to build it today probably is way higher than what they paid for back when it was built in 1954 or whatever it was.
Excellent. All right, next slide. So this last slide, this is the summary. And this is, again, our, our funding for all the different plans that we presented to you today. Our ideal plan. This is adding together the Washoe County School District Draft Strategic Blueprint. This is the multi-track year-round calendar avoidance by building more elementary schools. It's replacing our portables. I use the one as far as building permanent classrooms at the individual elementary schools. It's administrative facility needs. It's the additional school repair funding infusion of $50 million. The total of that is $155 million a year is what we would need over the next nine years. And when we look at, you know, the available funding we know that we have, the funding shortfall is $120 million a year. If we look at the Washoe County School District Traditional Plan, the way we've always done it, we have a shortfall, again, of $88.6 million. And if we look at just solely the Washoe County School District Strategic Blueprint, we have a funding shortfall of approximately $68 million. So there's the numbers that we, you know, we're looking for your direction that we would want to present to the Public Schools Overcrowding and Repair Needs Committee on Friday. And with that, unless there's any additional questions on this, I will turn this back over to Superintendent Davis.
Oh, we got several questions here. Don't get up and sit down in the audience.
I'm here.
Mr. Smith.
My God. I just want to, you know, thank again your team for the work that you have done and providing some sort of a draft plan for us. Because that's really key for me. Because I'm kind of a visual person. We can talk about dollars and cents all day. But when we get a roadmap on where we're going to go and how we want to use the money, the dollars and cents start to make sense. Otherwise, it's just dollars and cents. So the, the work that has gone into this, for me, and I think the rest of the Board of Trustees, and if this is something that we can adopt as a board, as a policy for the district, and a plan to move forward, it's something I think that could benefit the community. If we adopt it, I think that could be something that would be, something that would be great. It's a step in the right direction. As you know, there are many more steps we need to take. But I think it's a step in the right direction as we start to create or look at creating a draft, if you will, vision on what we want education to be in Washoe County School District going forward. Not what education has been. But in many ways, by creating this draft vision, it allows us to have a conversation with the community about what we can re, we can almost reinvent education for Washoe County School District and how we do the business of education. It's costly, it's a lot of money. So thank you. And I will tell you, just as a little personal privilege, sometimes throughout life, we learn lessons. And many years ago, I actually helped Don Gustafson and Sharon Engel out in a little town called Hawthorne, Nevada, to get signatures to put the property tax cap on residential property on primary residences. Had I had known now, then what I know now, right? Perhaps Conservative Nick here may not have been in support of that, of that legislation. Because that 3% property tax increase, right? It's great on the upswing. But when the values go down, they go down at whatever the values go down. It's not 3% up or 3% down. So it's not weighted on both sides. There's no barbell. It's just a cliff or a slow gradual climb. And at the end of the day, all we really do is hurt our community. And we hurt our kids, and we hurt the prospect of future business. Because there will be a point when business won't bring their business here. Because education needs can't be met. We have people out selling Reno, selling the state of Nevada, and that's working for now. But without this kind of draft proposal, and hopefully, it's a proposal that I could support a proposal like this, or hopefully, something that the rest of the board can mull over and support, but something we can bring to the community and reinvent education in the Washoe County School District and how we do the business of it. So thanks for your time, Pete.
And thank you, trustee Smith. One thing I'll mention is that, you know, in giving these presentations, I always want to say, and maybe to keep you from having too much guilt on your signature gathering, is that, you know, I think it was obviously with the greatest of intentions to put the 3% property cap on, you know, during the time of the economic boom we were having before the Great Recession. I mean, people were feeling that their property taxes were going up faster than their salaries were going up. And I think it was with the greatest of intentions to say, let's not overburden the population with this cap. I don't think anybody foresaw that we were going to have, all of a sudden, this great climb and then this great decline. And all of a sudden, now we put us in this situation. I wish we could have had that foresight to see that. And we probably could have put some safety brakes onto that that, you know, would have probably been a great idea, looking back, you know, back, you know, but hindsight, as they say, is 2020.
But you know, too, on this plan that we got here, it's going to be money in the community. It's not going to go to Arizona. It's going to be earned here by workers. It's going to be earned by property owners that are going to sell property to school district. All this money will be spent in this community. And that's one thing that we've got to realize, that it's not going to get on a railroad car and go someplace else. It's going to be spent here, it's going to be invested in this community, and it's a boon for the community to have this money circulating in the community. It's, it's, in a way, growth is paying for itself because of the tax increase of the bond and everything, and it's right here in the community being spent, so.
No, it's a, it's a great point, President Mayor. The other thing it reminds me of on property taxes, one thing I think the public needs to recognize is, we are a unique state in that we have a depreciating property tax.
Yeah.
So we have a 1.5% basically depreciating property tax. So if you stay in your house for a long time, your property tax depreciates, and we've been showing that example to the Public Schools Overcrowding and Repair Needs Committee and others. Now, that's been addressed several times in the legislature, but again, it's never really gotten traction. So you have to have a certain amount of growth every year just to even counteract that depreciation of the property tax.
Yeah.
And that does not reset when you sell your home. So once it's fully depreciated, you sell your home, it stays at a depreciated amount.
And that's a bugaboo with me, because in my neighborhood, people come in here from Oregon and California, and they buy up all these homes, and they get, they get, in my area, they get 75% depreciation on that house. They go away, they charge rent and everything, they don't keep up the properties and everything, but they come here with the intent, oh man, I can save a lot of money on the taxes. And I keep saying to you guys that buy these fancy houses out there, if I had children going to school, I'd be paying less than what you do. For, for, see, it's not really a fair tax. Yeah. Come and move into my neighborhood. Yes, okay.
Thank you, President Mayor.
You're welcome, former student of mine.
Thank you. So I have a bugaboo, as President Mayor would say. I, so I want to talk on behalf of the South Meadows' parents, because they're the ones who are just last on multi-track, and now they're going to be the first ones back on multi-track. And so I would be remiss if I am not, if I'm not being their voice today, because they, so I want, so here, here would be a question I think they might ask. How many students are being varianced out of Sepulveda right now to address the overcrowding? So for example, we have a lot of kids who are zoned for Brown, who are, who are on a variance to Pleasant Valley because of the overcrowding at Brown. So I want to kind of, are we looking at the details, are we looking at those details? And I'm sure you are, Pete, knowing you.
Yeah, we, you know, we have, all the variances at this point have been voluntary on the parents' behalf. We have not sent anybody out from those schools that you mentioned based on rezonings or any kind of forced variance. We don't do that here at the Washoe County School District. Now, Randy can give you some of the numbers as far as how many students are going from, you know, Brown or Double Diamond or Sepulveda to other schools, but that's basically been by choice. Now, we have tried to provide transportation for any parents who want to send their children from Brown to Pleasant Valley, so we've had a bus that actually will transport them in the morning. I think some parents are taking advantage of that. But that's kind of the situation we're in now. And I guess, again, I reiterate that my biggest concern for the parents in that area would be if we can't address the middle school and high school issue for them. As much as multi-track year-round to some of the parents is an inconvenience, and they don't care for that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and I recognize others do like it. I recognize there's issues with it. It's, again, as we've said tonight, there's a much bigger issue for us, at least in our recommendation, of what they would be facing at DePoli and facing at Damone Ranch High School, if we can't address that. Because when we look at the overcrowding at Damone Ranch High School, that's even with the addition, if we can't build these other high schools, we could be facing double sessions at Damone, even with the addition, if we can't build some of these other high schools. So it's a dire need at the middle schools and high schools, and our recommendation is, we have to address that first before we really think about multi-track year-round.
So, so my question is, then, why would we not see a middle school in Phase Two for the South Meadows' area?
We could, I mean, I'm not saying Phase Two, but I mean, that is one of those growth-dependent ones. We realize it would probably be high in that Phase Three rankings, but we're just unwilling at this time, and I think it's not, we're recommending that we not try to prioritize those now, and that we try to be as nimble and, and be able to react to development as it occurs. I don't have that answer for you tonight to say how I would prioritize South Meadows' Middle School over Spanish Springs Middle School. I just don't have those answers for you tonight, because we really have to look at, at growth. I think one of the issues that came up last time, when the parents there said, you know, you promised us an elementary school, and then you didn't build it. Well, what happened during that time period was that, yes, there was plans, and they were well underway of trying to, you know, get those plans developed to build that elementary school in the Damone Ranch area. They also had a huge need in the Spanish Springs area for an elementary school. When the Great Recession kind of just was starting, some of the development in that Damone Ranch area kind of stopped, and the Spanish Springs area was still going. So through a public process here at the board, long before, I think, any of us, that they came forward to the board and said, we'd like to move that elementary school from being from the Damone Ranch area to Spanish Springs. The board approved. Then, the Great Recession really started kind of taking an impact, and they came back to the board and said, now we're recommending with declining enrollment, let's not build either one of them at this time. Let's invest that money, again, that pendulum swung back over to repairs and renovation. Let's invest that money instead into repairing and renovating a lot of our older schools. And that's where the money went, and it, you know, did a great job in doing that. That was because of the Great Recession and declining enrollment. It wasn't that anybody didn't want to build a school at Damone Ranch, it's just that at the time, the board felt the prioritization should be, with declining enrollment going on, let's put the money here.
Well, and I think, I think that's just a result of us not having enough funding, Pete, where you have to, school boards, past school boards. I'm, I, I don't want to fault the past school board for making those decisions. They, they, they all did, we did the best that we could back then. So, but I feel that if I'm, I'm going to need more information for the questions that I ask, because I think the parents are going to be, I want you to be prepared, because I think the parents are going to ask that question. They're going to want to drill down what, what the enrollment looks like at Sepulveda in comparison to Brown and Double Diamond, and we have to be prepared to answer those questions for them. Because I think they feel out there, out in that area of the community, that they always take the brunt for, for the growth. And that may or may not be true, but we have to be very prepared to answer their questions and be spot-on with the information and the data that we're providing them. Because I really feel like it's kind of unfair, it's unfair for them, because they're going to be the first, they were the last ones off multi-track, and now they're the first ones back on, yet we're not putting a, a school out there. And I understand your reasons, and I think it's very well thought out, but we have to be able to translate that information to, to them, because they're, they're not going to be necessarily satisfied with this proposal.
Okay, you have a closing.
But Mr. Rosenberg has something to say.
Hold on, hold on. All I was going to say is, we all have to recognize that it's the greater good of the whole parcel, and we've got to just recognize that's where it is.
Well, at the risk of telling you how old I am, I think for my 20 years in education, the most charged issue has to be around generating funds to build schools, rezoning, and double sessioning year-round. And it is emotionally charged, and sometimes the emotion get in the way of what's right for the good of the order. And so as we do this work, I'm just going to kind of close the strategic blueprint up and talk about what the purpose we came here for this item would be. The document is a draft strategic blueprint to go to the Public Schools Overcrowding Committee and the public, to show how we want to lay the foundation for our school district. We will address our growth and overcrowding issues now, but as we do that, we're going to look at what that impact is for decades to come. So there's a, and we know we sat in meetings and people talked about previous superintendents. In 15 years, somebody's going to be talking about what we did today with this, and did we address the issues of all kids in Washoe County School District. So we need to be honest, this is not a new situation for Washoe County. We've never had adequate resources to build and maintain schools, but what we need is a new outcome for our students as we continue on our pathway, for every child by name and face to graduation. And when I say every child, whether they live in the south, the east, the north, the west, the inner city, the outer city, the rurals, like, we have to make decisions to take care of the district. They are our kids, the most precious resource we have going. There will be kids who will take care of me and Howard later, right? We're going to build future doctors, kids at Tesla. We are taking care of the future, and so we have to be cognizant about every choice we make, and not make it in isolation of any independent group, but what's good for the order of the district. We would like to hear your thoughts today, and ultimately come away today with a strategic blueprint that we can present to the Public Schools Overcrowding Committee, for them to be able to finalize a ballot question to fund school construction. Likewise, we would like, with your thoughts and approval, to take the draft strategic blueprint out to the community as well for additional input and discussion before it's finalized. Because I think the community needs to understand the broader issue of, even if we built an elementary school, it would take so many years, and then the problem we would have would be in secondary. So we would still be chasing growth and not managing it. So as we do this work, we need some input today, because we need to be able to go out to the public, go to the overcrowding committee. We need to go out and talk about our challenges and get on the ball to take care of business for kids.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, which is...
Whoa, whoa.
What? You still talking?
No, did you talk about a decision on blueprint?
There's no decision.
A discussion?
Yeah.
On the next one, okay.
Is that all right, if I go on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 2.2, Presentation by Staff and by the Chairman of the Public Schools Overcrowding and Repair Needs Committee, and Discussion by the Board Regarding the Draft Proposed Washoe County School District Strategic Blueprint for Student Growth and Overcrowding. For Information and Discussion Only. Lindsey Anderson and Sean Carey.
Thank you, President Mayor, members of the trustees of our school district. I'm again Sean Carey. I'm the appointee from the City of Sparks to the committee, which was established by Senate Bill 411, to give Washoe County voters a choice. And I'm reminded of my 31 years in local government, that you can't change the past, but you can change the future. If you haven't learned from the past, you won't have a future. And right now, our future is decided by 50% plus one on next November's ballot.
That's right.
And I'd like you to keep 50% plus one behind the hard work that your staff is doing. They've come forward against a set of problems which would be overwhelming, except that Pete's heart's in it, Tracy's heart's in it, your team's heart is in this. Because they see there is no future unless we get 50% plus one on the next ballot. So thank you. There's a lot of tough work ahead, but thank you for taking this leap for our community, because we have a chance. We have a chance to give 50% plus one to make a difference in our future. And our committee is dedicated people. There's 18 of them. They're asking tremendous questions. They're going to write a question that'll go on the ballot. And we have to be very conscious that that 50% plus one will take a lot of hard work. It has already taken a lot of hard work, but it is the only way you're going to find a future, in my mind. Those are my comments tonight, and Lindsey may want to add more.
You know, that's a good point. Everyone that supports the questions should take another person to be that plus one.
Good evening, President Mayor. Lindsey Anderson, Government Affairs for the record. And I don't, I don't want to take Sean's time, I think he did a great job representing the committee, and I appreciate your sense of urgency, and he didn't really mention, but their committee is also in a rush, obviously, to meet the deadlines, to get the work they need to get done in time to craft the ballot question. And so Pete and his team have worked a million hours in, you know, a very short period of time, and so we appreciate you coming together for us and our team to be able to present to their committee in only two days. They will get the very same presentation you just got tonight, with some of your feedback that they can then consider as they craft their ballot question. So thank you for moving quickly and allowing us to kind of push faster than we would normally want to push. But the only reason we're doing that is so that their committee can be successful in their work, so thank you for that.
Thank you. You're pushing the legislature. Through the legislature, too. Speaking of push, we appreciate all the hard work you've done to enable... And you too, Sean. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, that was for discussion only, so we'll move to Item 2.03. Presentation by Staff, Discussion by the Board, and Possible Action Regarding the Draft Proposed Washoe County School District Strategic Blueprint for Student Growth and Overcrowding. And Possible Direction to Staff to Present the Draft Document to the Community and to the Public Schools Overcrowding and Repair Needs Committee. I'm surprised you haven't come up with an acronym for it. That's what educators do. In order to gather and receive public input regarding possible revisions and finalizing of the document prior to ultimate approval by the board, for discussion and possible action.
So we, again, Pete Detchard, Chief Operations Officer, so we are at your mercy here, just looking for your direction and, and looking for, hopefully for action. It is our intention, as, as Lindsey Anderson said, to do this presentation Friday for the Public Schools Overcrowding and Repair Needs Committee, but we'll take any of your input as far as relaying that to, to the committee.
Okay. Any suggestions or direction, Mr. Rosenberg?
The report is excellent. It's depressing, but it's excellent. We need to do something. This is a point of departure, so that we can do something. Therefore, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the draft-proposed Washoe County School District Strategic Blueprint for Student Growth and Overcrowding, and direct staff to present the blueprint document to the community and to the Public Schools Overcrowding and Repair Needs Committee, in order to gather public input prior to final approval of the blueprint by the board.
Sir, second.
Second.
It's been moved, and secondly, do you need discussion? Yes.
I too want to, first of all, just concur what Trustee Smith said, just the work. I can't imagine the number of hours that this has taken, in addition to your regular responsibilities. So the work that you and your team, and, and Randy, and just everyone, Superintendent Davis, just the whole team gathering together, it really took a village to put this together, it had to, especially in such a short period of time. And I'm certainly sensitive to, to what Lindsey said. I, I would just, just have a couple of comments for my, for my colleagues. You know, I think as, 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 as difficult and complex as this issue is, you know, this is not the kind of stuff you expect to deal with when you say, sure, I want to be on the board. It's, it's just not, it's just not, you know, sign me up, yes! This was the small print.
Oh, that's what it was.
Yeah, this was, this was the small print. Yeah, actually, in fact, this is Wednesday, in fact, it was a year ago this Wednesday that I was appointed to this board. If I knew then, but I, no, no, no. You would still be here.
Many times.
No, this is, this is just some tough stuff. This, it, it really, really is. You know, and, and I, I just want to encourage all of us as, as a board to, this is a time where we're being, we are being asked to exercise leadership. I mean, we have a group of people, very capable leaders and stakeholders in our community that, that have come to us and said, we're willing to go to the mat for what you need in the school district, but we need your leadership, so we know what to ask for. And so they've come back to us to say, help us help you. And that's, that's really what I'm hearing, and I guess you, Nick last time talked about being visionary, so it's time for us to exercise some leadership. And leadership is absolutely hard. It's hard, and anybody doesn't think so, they've, they've never led. It's, it's like a situation where we hate the situation that we're in, and we hate the solution to the situation. So it comes down to which one do we hate more, the situation or the solution? And the situation is what's going on right now, but the solution is what takes us to what's next. We cannot compromise what's next, we cannot give up what's next, so we can protect what's now. That's bad leadership. And so as, as painful as, as it is, I believe for all of us, and as much as, I was at the, the Brown overcrowding meeting, and so I heard the pain and the, the voices and the emotion from those parents, and I, I sympathize with them, I do. There's, there's nothing that we can do to go back, and that's why I think it's very important that as we go forward, we're very transparent and very open, and really look at, this is when we can expect things to happen and not commit to something we can't do, because it isn't fair to them. And they haven't been treated fairly for way too long, for, for way too long. But the worst thing for them would be double sessions for their kids in middle school. That's worse. That is absolutely worse. I mean, the stories that, that I've heard, now, we've all done research on this and so on, I can't imagine a child being at a bus stop at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. I don't care what time of year it is, I don't care how hot it is. I don't want to be at a bus stop at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. You know, so I can't imagine that. That would actually keep me up at night. That would keep me up at night. And so, you know, I, I... And so, you know, I, I, I love the ideal plan, I'm, I'm all in on that, and then that would help us really be extra sensitive to those schools that may have to deal with that as they do their school plans and come up with some ways, how can they avoid that, avoid that and put that off as much as possible? Absolutely, I'm, I'm, I'm all for that, but however it is that we end up, we have to, I, I believe we must exercise leadership in this going forward and think about what's next and not just hang on to what's now, or we will be remiss in our duties as public servants.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the lecture.
Trustee Franklin.
Thank you, President Mayor. I too want to thank you for the hard work that you've done. This is an incredible amount of work in a very short period of time, and I will agree with my colleague, Vice President Taylor, that this is a question of leadership and our ability to exercise that. One of the things that I truly appreciate, and I've had discussions with you about this, Pete, many times, and with you, Tracy, about the guiding principles, and I think that, for me, really helps us if we share those guiding principles, which I think we all do, and they've come from us and they've been suggested. I think what, what I recognize is that there are other principles that we could have selected, but we have to pick our priorities, and in some ways, these principles drive what our prioritization is. As a parent who is a survivor of multi-track year-round at Brown, I, I say that only because it actually ended up not being as bad as I thought it was going to be. My daughter was at Brown when they went multi-track before, and I recognize the challenge that it creates. I was a single mother at, at the time. It was very challenging, it was very disruptive, but what I appreciated was the district's support. One of the things I want to emphasize in number four of the guiding principles is that I have an expectation that we're going to do whatever we can to truly minimize the disruption. If we have to go that route with some of our schools, and it sounds like that, that in order to avoid the double sessions, which is far more disruptive and actually destructive. I mean, I have a high school student now, and I can't imagine her getting up in the morning at 5:00. It's hard enough for her to get to school at, you know, the start time for high school, which we get complaints about already, that the high schoolers need to start later. So I can't even imagine that. But one of the things I think is truly important is that we recognize that the disruption that any of these changes might cause for families, we need to be creative, we need to think about approaching multi-track year-round, learning from the past, what we have learned, where, what can we do differently this time around if we have to do that? Does it have to be exactly the same approach? Does it have to look exactly the same? Are there things that we can do differently, build in differently? I, I know that Deputy Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent McNeil mentioned that we've started working on and communicating with our community service providers regarding camps and support and daycare and, and other kinds of programming and the availability of that so that we can step, our community can step up and meet the needs of the families whose kids and whose families might be disrupted. So for me, that is a very important but challenging guiding principle because it is so broad and it looks like so many things. But what I'll say is, I appreciate these guiding principles, I support these guiding principles, I understand how, looking at it holistically, it drives us to produce a blueprint like you have, because in some ways, that, that is the, a solution that provides the best on all five of these guiding principles. As the at-large representative, or one of the two, I hear from parents from Spanish Springs, Sun Valley, Sparks, and the South Valleys as well, and so I have to think about the entire half, half of the district, but I also recognize that all of us have to think about the entire district, that it is challenging because we will hear from those we represent, but we have to think about the entire community and the bigger picture. And will everybody be happy with the decisions we make? No, but if they understand what drove our decision, or understand the guiding principles that have led us to choose these particular, make these particular choices or to make these particular recommendations, I think that that will help. But what I, so it's a long way of saying that I think these guiding principles do help frame the suggestions that we make, help make them clearer for me, both as a board member but also as a parent. And, and so I think that those are the, the comments I'd like to make, and I, again, like Trustee Taylor said, this is a challenge for us, and we do have to exercise that leadership.
Go ahead.
Thank you, President Mayor. And I echo the trustees' compliments to you, Pete, and staff for your hard work. I know you've worked tirelessly, and I'm so appreciative of, of the time and energy, and also your compassion. You always put our kids first. In everything that you say and do, it's always about putting the kids first, and so that, that means a lot to me as a trustee, so, so thank you for that. And I, I have to say, I would love to see the relief focused on the middle school level for the South Meadows area pushed into phase two. I'd like the trustees to consider that before we take this vote to approve the blueprint. I think the families in the South Meadows have been overcrowded for way too long, and if we're talking, what we're talking about is the possibility of avoiding them going, what's it called?
Double session.
Double sessions, Superintendent. Double sessions, I think, you know, I mean, history shows that area has been overcrowded forever. They've always been overcrowded, and so I believe we need a middle school in phase two for the South, South Meadows area to relieve that overcrowding, especially with that third grade, with that third grade bubble. So I would ask the trustees to consider that, moving that, so I can support the strategic blueprint.
Well, we're not here to do that now.
We're not? I thought we were voting on this.
We're not, we're not saying what's going to be in what phase or anything like that because we don't have, in fact, if you'll see, it says, "Growth dictated." Yes.
I just, I think it's important to remind the board, too, that, that while we're sending this, if we vote today, we'd just be sending this to the committee that was created by us before 11, which ultimately is going to go out to public input. The way the motion is read is that it'll come back to the board, where we'll have ultimate final decision on what that proposal's going to look like to go out. So it can be amended because I think what's important, too, at least I hear what you're saying, is that we do need to hear more about this from our families. However, we're not the facility that's going to facilitate that. SB 411's creation of the committee will be facilitating some of that and letting their discussion do that, is my understanding. We, we have a role in, in taking feedback, and certainly anybody who wants to provide feedback to us, it's not going to be rejected, and that can be considered in our final, you know, our final revision of this policy should a revision be made. So I think that's important to consider, too. And, and as a parent on the board, it's a hard decision. It, it's a hard decision that we, that we have to face, especially because my kids are going to be going to Spanish Springs Elementary School, which just a few years ago was actually a multi-track year-round school that will very likely be in a couple more years, two or three, in multi-track year-round school. And my kids are slated to go to Spanish Springs High School, which is the highest-growth high school in the district, so there are a lot of things we need to focus on, but even then, I need to make my decision, too, based off of the needs of our entire community, right? And I think that's the most important thing. We know that we need elementary schools, we know that we need middle schools, we know that we need high schools. In a perfect world, we'd snap our fingers, SB 411's committee would be able to say, hey, voters, we're getting 50-plus one, we're not even going to ask you, and next year in November, the day after election day, we'd have the money. But this is a good first step, and it's been a first step that's been in place. You know, we've had, I think this is our third meeting discussing steps that we need to do, and I think the prudent thing to do would be to accept this today, accept the motion, move it forward, because the, the members of the committee are asking for this information, and they need it to further do the work that they need to, and it's all going to come back to us, and it's a great way for us to involve everybody.
You know, I just want to say a few things. You know, the real work, and you guys have put in tons of work, but the real work's going to come from the community. We cannot go out and, whatever tax question comes up, we can't go out and campaign for it. It's got to be done by the community. So those parents and those business people and that have to get together, whatever the question is, is yet to be determined, but get together and campaign to get funding for schools of the future. That's what the real question is, because we can, we can debate where these schools are going now, but if that doesn't pass, the question that they put together doesn't pass, it's all for naught. It's all for naught. So that's the real question. Is the community going to get behind the tax issue question in the next election in November of 2016, which sounds so, so far away, but it's to be here by tomorrow?
I have just a point of clarification. Because Trustee Roggerio made a suggestion to modify just a number in the report, and I, I just want to clarify that that's something that, that we can do today. I mean, my understanding is that we could do that. I heard you respond.
I don't think we can, because it is, they don't have the questions on which one's phase three. There's a whole bunch of them in phase three.
Right. What I heard her suggestion to be was just to change it from phase three to phase two, and that one, that one item around a middle school.
Well, okay.
Yeah, that would be within your purview, I believe, because, you know, we're just showing a phasing, and we show a phase one of being the addition to Monty Ranch High School. We're showing phase two being the Sun Valley area middle school, and the reasons are, based on our numbers showing those are our top priorities to avoid, and again, with our guiding principles, to avoid double sessions. But all the rest are shown as phase three because we're saying it's growth dictated, and we're just going to have to respond to where the highest growth is. And if you wanted to take one out, I mean, we could make that change and at least present that change to the Public Schools overcrowding repair needs committee unless there's any issues I see to that, but...
Well, so, in other words, we're just going to take one out of that number three and put it in number two without...
That's your choice.
Without any public input.
Well, if...
Oh, the hair.
Well, I think, okay. Yes.
If, if, if I may, why don't we, I, I'm, I'm, again, they, they've gone through a lot in the South Meadows. I'm comfortable with changing it to phase two and put growth dictated next to it. And then that way, if for some reason it's dictated a different kind of way, we can always adjust, but I don't think, I think that's a small thing to do, you know, based upon where they are. I mean, I, I hear that, okay?
Yes.
As the maker of the motion, is this being offered as a friendly amendment?
Are you offering it?
I'm not offering it, but someone has offered it.
Yes, Trustee Rosenberg.
You are offering it as a friendly amendment?
Very.
As a first, I will accept the friendly amendment, but we need the second person.
Second.
You will accept the friendly amendment?
I will accept the friendly amendment.
Then I think we need to vote on it now.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. The motion passes five to one.
Okay.
Because there's a whole bunch of them that picked it out without public input, nobody cares if Spanish schools are stupid or the same. I think it's all shot.
I know, I know, but we've got to throw, and I'm not going to murder anybody yet. Public comment?
I just have two, please. I'll leave Superintendent.
Please.
I just wanted to clarify the, I'm sorry, Paula Waxman, one more time. You heard from me at the beginning. One thing I've heard, I just wanted to clarify, the last bond fund that passed was in 2002. So 2002 was the last time the school board had money for construction of schools. 2002 was 13 years ago. So, and I know that because that was when the school was supposed to be built in my neighborhood, the elementary school that was supposed to relieve the overcrowding at Brown Elementary, was supposed to be built with that 2002 bond fund. I was at the rezoning meeting where the guy said, yeah, we spent that money. I thought they were going to have a riot. Anyway, so, that's all I have to say about that. The other thing I was saying was that we were talking about only making certain elementary schools on year-round multi-track, and I want to speak for making all of the elementary schools on year-round multi-track. And the reason for that is because it gets the community's attention. The only thing, I mean, this has been going on since 2002, 13 years. Everybody's ignored it because it's only a problem at Brown and Double Diamond. Now that we're talking about putting every elementary school on year-round, everybody's listening. So I would like to just request that we keep it that way because now everybody's listening. You've got the community's attention, finally, and with the community's attention, maybe something will get done. That's all.
That went pretty quickly through that last vote. We, we think we should clean that up and have a vote on the amendment first, and perhaps the thing to do would be to rescind the vote as it was taken first and then address the amendment, vote on the amendment, and if it passes, then vote on the amended motion.
Very well. First, then, I move that we vote on the amendment.
You need to rescind the vote first.
Oh, we need to rescind. How do I phrase that?
Somebody just needs to rescind it.
I, I move that we rescind the action that we took in order to clean it up.
It's been moved seconded. All those in favor rescind? By saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, now, you could just, that's, Neil and I have been talking a little bit. You could just do one motion with, with the wording of the proposed amendment if you wish.
What happens to that?
Or we could take two votes.
Okay. It's, does somebody...
Yes, yes, I will remake the motion.
With the amendment attached.
With the amendment.
Yes, but it's not an amendment now.
Right.
It's just new words.
Lovely weather we're having if it doesn't snow, don't you think? I move that the Board of Trustees approve the draft proposed Washoe County School District strategic blueprint for student growth and overcrowding, and direct staff to present the blueprint document to the community and to the Public Schools overcrowding and repair needs committee in order to gather public input prior to final approval of the blueprint by the board.
Is that...
I didn't hear the new words.
With, with the changes indicated.
Why is the change being indicated?
How the hell do I know?
Middle school being without two phases.
To move.
All right, then, okay, being growth dictated and to move the Arrow Creek School...
The South Meadows School to be growth dictated in phase three.
Wonderful. That's exactly what I meant to say.
Is that acceptable to you, sir?
Yes, it's fine.
We need a second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, aye. Motion carries five to one.
I'm going to go to class now and kill 10 kids.
Meeting the, meeting the...